Yay, it's being recorded. Please assist me with the pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Fire escapes, you know where they are, it's in your house someplace. We have a timber harvest, is anyone here for? Lang, logan bird trust. Timber harvest. Is anybody here for the timber harvest? Hey, we'll put that aside and move along to Illuminati Service Foundation. Is anybody present for that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, give your names please and a brief description of what you plan on doing. Or since the last meeting, what you have changed.
Thomas, we can't hear you.
Maybe I should turn that on. Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you all well. We are here for a revised submittal. This is a sketch for a new location. It is on the west side of the property, which is providing a longer access. It's a shorter driveway. There's a lesser elevation to climb. Parking, everything about this, this location is superior to what you've seen in the past. So the program is, is a public, is a assembly, public assembly, house of worship. Sanjay, would you like to elaborate? Sanjay, would you like to elaborate?
Sure, it's been a couple of months and thank you, everyone, for the opportunity again. As Thomas mentioned, you know, we found a much better site for the, the house of worship. I'm an ordained Hindu priest, I'm a monk, and just wanting to fulfill an obligation from my family lineage to build something that I can dedicate to my parents. I, we, I, I expect there to be minimal use of the property. Probably a total of two to three weeks, 14 to 20 days a year, maybe two to three days a month. Not for use in the, in the winter months. And we would just use it on special occasions. And, you know, we, we did budget space for a fairly elaborate shrine, a big statue, which we still have to really figure out the, the details for.
Does any board member have any comment? I noticed that you have 52 spaces. How many people do you expect attending at any given time?
We, we anticipate it less than 100.
52 spaces. No new floor plans, so it'll still be a two, two building?
That's not a two-story. We received a longitudinal section from Jess Walker, which he can share with you and because that was a misnomer. It was never a two-story structure. But if you see the building section, you'll understand how it was designed.
Would you like me to put up this building section or would you like us to send that to you? Basically, basically you walk, you enter at one level and you go down instead of a flight of stairs to a lower level, but there's, there's never, there's never one level over another level. So it's a very simple building.
Yeah, I don't have any plans for that.
Yes, if you'd like to, I enable screen sharing, so if you want to show it, you can.
You know, if we could do that, I'd like to see.
This is basically the longitudinal section, section, looking into it. The entrance is over here to the right. There's, there's nothing below the entry vestibule area. So you enter and you go down a long flight of stairs into one level down, except never did, is it actually a two-story structure?
So everything is open from that level? You can see the ceiling?
All the way up. Open to below.
Thank you.
So in plan, it would it would look like.
And you're putting in a sprinkler system or no?
No, it's not required.
Okay, just can you go back to that, that electrical plan again, please? All right, thank you. Yeah, when you, if you can, I'd like, you know, before the building permit, I'd like to be able to review that. So if you can send me a hard copy, please, that would be great, please.
Sure, no problem.
Any other questions?
So is the shrine going to be placed after the floor is done and then built around it? Or is the shrine going to be in pieces that are assembled on site?
Pieces, it'll come in in pieces. We're, we're not sure of the details yet. And that would, if it required a permit, that would be under a separate permit, but it, we're building the building first.
All right, thank you.
Do they have Jonathan's review? Maybe, maybe Valerie wants to go over that with them.
Where's the lighting plan and everything else?
Happy to answer it. Any questions that you have on the review? And I can also just sort of summarize to you. I think there's additional information that Jonathan is looking to provide. He, you know, he wanted to note, he did raise some issues concerning the driveway. And there are still a couple of areas of, you know, that are proposed to have decent amount of cut taking place on the driveway. So those you'll probably definitely want to take a look at, especially dealing with the driveway grade and the surfaces.
Yeah, and I think he talked about retaining walls in those areas.
Exactly, exactly. And to take a look at whether those are going to be needed and also just give some additional details on that. Lighting and landscaping was another thing that the applicant will need to provide. And also parking requirements, again, just making sure.
We lost Valerie.
Yeah.
Yeah, you froze up Valerie.
Okay. Jonathan did have some format. Did you receive a copy of his memo?
Yes, I do. I have it and it's all of these, all of the, all of the, the comments are basically items that would normally be addressed in the engineering process. He's denoting that they're absent. We don't want to fully engineer it the way we did the first time. That was unnecessary to engineer it before we had a chance to review all of the issues. So we hope that it never happens again. And so now we'll go into all of the, the normal avenues of engineering the site.
And you can provide.
In this new location, although we are doing a significant cut in one area, we are keeping it down to less than 4%. Whereas before we were pushing 12 and a half percent or even 15%, which we're allowed to do for a short distance, but this is a much, much better approach all the way around.
Great. He suggested that you resubmit your EAF.
Yes, that will all be, that will all be reviewed as we, as we proceed.
Right, and I think Jonathan recognizes that at this point, this is a better plan and that, you know, it's ready for the next step. And we're just, he's just highlighting what's going to be needed in order to have, you know, the, a really complete application for the board to vote on.
Yes, I agree.
Right, and we'll leave those things in before we can send it to the county, et cetera, and right to our seeker and set up our public hearing.
Exactly.
So does the board have anything else wishes at this time?
Does anyone have any thoughts or concerns? It's just, you know.
Don Smallsley would like to make a motion that we accept the sketch plan and, and allow the applicant to go for his actual site plan and so on to finish up the engineering and present a complete application.
Don Odom will second that motion.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I thank you, Don.
None opposed, passed. We look forward to seeing if you can get the submittals in, in the proper time period, we can have you next.
I
I'm guessing it might not be next month.
I, I, I think we'd be very hard pressed to be able to produce all of that in, in a few weeks, but yeah, we're seeing you very soon.
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate you taking the time to get it right the first time. It, in, in the long run, it makes it quicker. Rather than back and forth.
Much better location, I think.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you very much.
Have a good night. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Good night. Is James Brook Lager or Langbun Trust here?
Yeah, I'm Jordan Heller. I'm representing Jim Brooks and the landowner.
Awesome. Give a brief review of what you need to do.
Yeah, I'm Jordan Heller. I'm a forester for Green Lumber Company. I'm helping Jim Brooks out get the permit. Basically, he wants to harvest about 77 acres of the landowners, 114 acres. It's more or less an ash salvage. I think most of you guys know the Emerald Ash Borders killed a lot of the ash trees, so he's just trying to help the landowner out by getting some of the value that's still in those trees out of the woods. So it's a pretty straightforward harvest. There's no soft ground in there. There's no stream crossings. They're going to use an old landing. I actually talked to Tony about it a few weeks ago. He's familiar with with the landing area. I guess he recalls the harvest from a number of years ago. And the only thing that the EF kicked out was the bald eagle. I guess there's a nest or within nine tenths of a mile of the property, but if you guys read the the resource screening report from DEC, as long as we aren't harvesting along the shoreline, which there is no shoreline on this property, will be, those are the, basically the standards to follow, so we don't disturb the nest.
Frankie, Frankie, did you get an opportunity to look through property?
Yes, I do. I'm familiar with the property and there is no problem with the bald eagle nest up there. Like he says, it's a dead end road. Should be no traffic problems. And I, like I say, I was at the site and it is on the old landing, so I, I don't see any problems there at all.
Did the SEQA committee, committee get a chance to review and do SEQA?
Yep, yes.
Yeah?
Barbara said yes.
Great. Does anyone want to make a determination as to?
Can I make a recommendation on SEQA because of the bald eagle issue slash non-issue?
Yeah.
I, I would suggest on this that there be a condition negative declaration and that the condition be that the DEC letter, it was DEC, right, Jordan?
Yes, yep.
That that DEC guidance be followed?
Yep. That makes sense.
Yep. Smallsley will make that motion.
Doug Hart.
We have a motion by Don Smallsley, a second by Doug Hart. And any discussion on SEQA? There being none, a vote? Dr. Longstein?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Alexandria?
Yes.
Mr. Odom?
Yes.
Mr. Schmoll?
Yes.
Then I vote yes. On the application for timber harvest, do we have a motion?
You have to open the public hearing.
Yeah. I forgot that.
That's why I'm here, John.
Is there, you used to kick me under the table.
I know.
Is there anyone here? Public hearing of the timber harvest. Is there anyone here who would like to speak about the timber harvest?
Smallsley makes a motion. We close the public hearing.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Motion on the timber harvest. I will make a motion that we accept the, the timber harvest and that they move forward with their application.
Subject to the?
Subject to the town.
Timber harvesting zoning regulations.
We have a list of things we'll send to you, Jordan.
I can read them. Do you have them or? You have them, Jordan?
I, I don't.
You may not. Jim Brooks, I'm sure does.
Yeah.
I, I would read them just because we're, we can't hand it to them.
Okay, no.
They will need approval from the County of Ulster Department of Public Works for the excess drive and loading area. A $1 million liability insurance policy naming the town of Worthing as co-insured. Workers' compensation disability and liability must be in place with the town. A $300 logging permit, did we change that or is that correct?
No, it's still correct.
Okay, $300 logging permit to be obtained from the code enforcement officer. No clear cutting of the property, no cutting of trees within 50 feet of any property line. No stream crossing without Department of Environmental Conservation approval. No logging on wet. All logs shall be loaded 50 feet from the road and no loading on public roads. All skid trails and loading areas shall be graded and seeded upon completion. The property must be kept in a clean and neat manner at all times. All property lines must be flagged and/or staked out prior to the issuance of the logging permit to be approved by the code enforcement office. Any questions?
Do we want to add the DEC comments?
Oh, yeah. And how would we word the, the bald eagle, no?
Be in compliance with the DEC recommendations in the fill-in date letter.
And I'll second that. All.
I'm sorry, too.
Aye.
Did you say county or did you say the town of Worthing?
I was going to say, right, is it a town road or county? I think you said county.
It's the town.
So that should be corrected to say that you'll get the proper permits from the town highway. I saw Jordan go like this.
Yeah.
Who seconded the motion, please?
Paul.
Paul Longstein, Dr. Longstein did.
Yeah, this, the, the letter, the copy of the letter that I have is undated. I think, I think it was an email.
Yeah, they changed their format. They sent me that letter in an email format. Normally it's a PDF, so that, that threw me for a little loop.
Okay, do you have it? Do you have a date on that?
Um, I'm checking for you right now. Hold on.
We can say as, as filed with the application.
Yeah, that's, that's easier.
Okay. Yeah, I'd have to go back in my email. That one's there.
And since we don't have a copy of that, the day, let's leave it with what you submitted.
On the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 You have a logging permit.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Sorry, meeting today. We do need to discuss the new zoning laws that are before, that has been prepared by the zone for the winter. We need recommendations if anyone has any changes. I think Frankie has some. I think Don might have a few. And I guess the easiest way is if we could get them to Barbara, Barbara could write them up and then send them to Valerie or Jonathan.
Well, you have to discuss them as a, a board though, because they're board recommendations, not individual recommendations. So if, if they could perhaps tell us and then you could determine whether the board agrees.
So who wants to take lead?
Go ahead, Frankie.
One of, one of the things is I, I have a new nickname in the building department. It's called the Chicken Man. It's on the regulations in 1213 on the keeping of chickens. I've been called out and I don't know how many numbers of times for the chickens. And we had, I had wrote a violation appearance ticket because somebody had chickens, 30 chickens plus for less than an acre. And the judge in his ruling allowed the guy to keep 10 chickens because it didn't say you could not have chickens on one or two acres. Our law only said you were, you shall be permitted chickens or fowl, three acres or more. So one of the changes I saw in, in talking to is if we're going to not allow chickens at three acres or less, we have to say no fowl less than three acres.
I thought we addressed that.
I thought we had also. Did it not make it?
Well, it's in here, but it's, the, the new wording is a little bit different. It says
It's not as we had said it to me.
Right. So what I think you should say, no fowl under three acres.
Yeah.
Okay. That's right. It's right. It's precise.
And where we do allow fowl, the other issue that I keep coming up is people that have three acres that have fowl, they want to raise fowl, they need the rooster. So I was thinking maybe we just say no fowl under three acres and fowl, if, are permitted, three acres or more.
And take out the no rooster part?
Take out the no rooster because under.
At what point do, isn't this talking more about pets as opposed to agriculture? Maybe that's what we have to clarify.
Because when you go three acres, we're allowing 25 per acre. So, you know, a farmer who wants to raise chickens needs a rooster to raise chickens. And just keep the rooster out of the less than three acres. To say no fowl. That takes in roosters, chickens, ducks, geese, turkeys, all that. Less than three acres. You will allow fowl, three acres or larger.
No fowl under three acres.
Exactly. No fowl, period.
And we, we said no roosters at all, didn't we?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a little extreme because of, you know, if we're, if we're going to be having more than three acres, I think, well, I, I can, I can see the I can see the instance where, you know, you have a three acre piece, but it's still right next to a neighbor, but we do live in the country, you know.
I think.
And surprisingly enough, you get used to that in, to the point where you don't hear it. So.
Yeah, I live by Forest Side Park in Kingston and I hear peacocks all the time. I don't even notice it anymore.
Right, exactly. And, and when they, and when they're not there, you miss them.
The railroad tracks, huh?
Because if somebody had guinea hens, they'd think the rooster sounded good.
It wouldn't have ticks, though.
That's true. Well, if you had chickens, you wouldn't have ticks either.
Any other revisions or corrections to the zoning laws?
Yeah, the only, the only comments I had were spelling errors, duplications, that sort of thing. I sent them on to, on in, so they should be taken care of.
Might I suggest when you put forth your comments on the chickens, I would, I think the conversation that you just had and the discussion dealing with agriculture versus, you know, people just wanting to keep chickens in their backyard, I think that's worth raising, especially dealing with the roosters because ultimately the board might decide that they don't want roosters, thinking only from the perspective of not agricultural purposes, but for somebody that just wants to have that as a hobby. So that might be something you might want to raise that, you know, that you're looking at it from two different levels.
I'm writing concept.
If you have three acres, you're going to have 25 chickens and one rooster?
You can have 25.
25 per acre.
Per acre. So you could have 75 fowl
on a three acre parcel.
On a three acre parcel. Don't you think that's too much?
For not, for a non-farmer, is 75 chickens allowed to run free or are they just trimmed up like the old, whatever the chicken farmer was in North Rand? In these barns and they never leave there?
This has to be maintained on the property, but that doesn't mean that they're going to go out in the middle of the road.
Right, they should be maintained on the property, but I, I rode by a place today, which I've already wrote a letter to, telling him that he did not have the acreage for it. I've gotten no response, but when I was in the area today, I found his ducks, his chickens, I don't know, well off his property, up the road. So he's, I mean, there has to be something with maintaining them on your property and keeping them fenced in somehow. But it's, it's kind of hard because some fowl have a tendency to fly unless you put a high fence up, they'll go over it.
Well, you can always clip their wings. We used to do that all the time. We would have them in a, in a fenced in area. And when they got old enough to fly, then we would just clip a wing so that they could only fly in circles and not be able to lift out over the fence. So there's ways of maintaining a flock within a fenced in area.
So do we want to change any wording or?
I don't want to put in the wording that you're going to have to clip their wings because that's an inhumane thing and I don't need like, like.
You're not clipping, you're not clipping their wings, you're clipping their feathers. That's all. So that they can't fly. Their feathers are dead, so it's not inhumane, but the, my concern is to differentiate between commercial and a almost home use because that gets very difficult. I mean, you, you go ahead and you get a dozen chickens and, okay, you start, you, you produce more eggs than you can use and you start selling the eggs. So at what point does it go from home use to commercial use? You know, I think that would be very difficult to enforce. You know, I think that would be very difficult to enforce. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong Frank.
And you know, it's really hard because there are places in this town that they have chickens in, in pens and are, they're not let out and we don't even know about it.
Right.
In this section, this section is domestic household animal. For household purposes or as pets, it's not for agriculture. I think agriculture is going to be determined elsewhere and by Ag and Markets Law. So the, the section we're discussing is for domestic household animals. How many foul you can have on your property. So that may come into that rooster. You know, thing. You, you go to a different level if you're, if you need a rooster.
But again, you've also in that same, I think in that same section, if I'm not mistaken, you have, uh, raising of dogs where you.
Right.
So.
Yep.
Uh, you know.
And horses and cows.
Correct.
Things as pets.
Right. So therefore, you know, are we making it an exception for just roosters? Uh, because if, if you're raising them for your own use or, or, you know, as a, you know, I guess that's my question. I, I, I agree. It, it is in that section and it, you know, I, I don't have a problem with roosters, but then again, I grew up with them, so.
Right now.
You know, you can suggest that they consider it.
I didn't catch that Mary Lou.
You can make a suggestion, recommendation that they consider allowing one rooster or whatever you want. And then they can discuss it and decide.
Okay.
Is, is I, I also know that, uh, you go ahead and get chickens at, uh, or, uh, tractor supply. And if you don't get a, uh, pullets only, you don't know how many roosters you're gonna get.
Exactly.
So, you know, just obtaining chickens can be difficult. You might have to get two dozen birds in order to get five hens, you know? So just another issue.
Any other, uh, items that the board has seen on those zoning, uh, changes? Or revisions to the county works and it took us almost a year. Uh, no, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And every Wednesday we met and line by line, we were over every, every item on our zoning. I think it's acceptable. We'll send those recommendations to Bonnie and Bonnie can, uh.
Not, not to Bonnie, to the town board.
To the town board.
Yeah, and I'm sure, you know, people are gonna bring things up in public. I'm sure that this is not the final product. That's why we have public hearings and recommendations and I don't know, the, the county said they'll have the recommendations to us before the meeting. I haven't seen them yet.
Okay.
So do we have to do that by a motion, Mary Lou?
Yeah.
Yes, there should be a motion to make. The recommendations concerning the chickens and the spelling errors and duplications.
On Smalley will make that motion.
Doug Hart, second.
Um, the motion, any discussion? None being? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Washington's been cut down to town for their approval. They also should consider the town board is going to meet publicly next week. Don't know exactly.
Barbara said this week.
This week.
The public hearing is Thursday.
So, uh, they're going to have a, a public hearing. I don't know how the planning board will proceed next month. Um, if we have more than two or three applications and the public have to be present. Um, recommendations as we can't say nobody can, those people for this logging operation can be present because it's a public hearing, everybody can be present.
Right, that's tough.
We can single that out and keep social distancing unless there's a rule that we can say, oh, your vaccine card or you must be.
Yes, and there is. At this point, the guidance is, if we're at the seventy percent, you guys say, I missed that. So the guidance, unless it's changed, because you know, things change constantly. But the guidance is if someone is vaccinated, they don't have to social distance at all. They don't have to wear masks. If they are not vaccinated and we can ask and we can require proof. So if they're not vaccinated or they don't want to require proof or they, you know, didn't bring their card or whatever to the meeting, then they have to sit six feet apart and they have to wear masks. So that, you know, we just have a little meeting room. At this point, um, this type of meeting, this virtual meeting is still allowed until July fifth. That may, you know, it may still be allowed. If it's not allowed, we're meeting in person and, and hoping we can figure it out. Um, and you know, if it is, it may depend how many things are on the agenda. But of course, we don't always know that before we put out the, the public hearing notices.
I think that.
And, and we also never know how many people are gonna show up to a public hearing.
Right, cause you don't, you know, if it's, if it's about somebody who wants to put chickens in their yard, you could have fifty people show up from the neighborhood. I'm not kidding. I've seen these public hearings.
Yeah.
And then something you think is gonna be huge, nobody cares.
Right.
But you know, but I imagine that when, um, when Mr. Coombs gets in his, his studies and we're ready to have, you know, another meeting where we discuss Baker Farms application, it's gonna be a full house. And that, that's gonna be hard if everyone's not vaccinated.
And who's gonna monitor that?
I'm sorry?
Who's going to monitor that the night of the meeting?
Yeah, I mean that, you have to consider that too. Who's gonna be in charge of greeting people at the door and asking for their vaccination status?
We may have to consider that. Uh, anyone on the board or any member of the public can always wear a mask and, uh, if you feel comfortable, more comfortable sitting next to me with a mask on, but.
You know, I always contact the state on these issues. So maybe one of the departments. The actual laws are, cause what I've read after we pulled the, um, restrictions, like restaurants can go full capacity. And you know, if you're not, if you're vaccinated, you don't have to wear a mask. If you're unvaccinated on the honor system, you should wear a mask. But, uh, right now it's like correctional, uh, facilities need to wear a mask, health, medical, dental.
Right.
Wear a mask. So I mean, there's gotta be like, um, maybe the association, you know, and somebody should.
Well, what I just gave you is from the Department of Health guidance for this. And I, I check it daily to see if they update it. So they, they could have updated it since, well, you know how often these things change. But this is the guidance the state has put out now.
So we will leave it at that. Is there any further discussion that anybody has to bring before the board?
So, so if I understand correct, Mary Lou, uh, as of, at this time, our next meeting will be in person. Because.
Oh, I don't know.
Well, no, I mean, the, the rules are, are the, uh, being able to cover, have meetings like this, uh, on Zoom expires July fifth.
Well, it, every, the executive orders for these meetings are only allowed to go for a thirty day period. So the executive order that says July fifth was made on June fifth.
Okay, alright.
So that doesn't mean that tomorrow or sometime between now and July fifth, the executive order could change to August fourth.
Okay.
So all along it's been, you know, determined monthly or sometimes weekly.
Sometimes daily. But at this point, the, it, it set to expire on July fifth, so therefore our July meeting would be after that. So I would, I would say that we would, unless.
I mean, that's how it's been every month since March twenty twenty. Just so you know, every month. And I don't care what you do, but there's a things you have to consider is basically whether you have room.
Barbara says that she needs to know, uh, because the thing is, is that she's studying a public hearing.
In person.
Yes, yes, you can do it. You can do it. Um, I believe so. I believe we'll be able to do a hybrid. It's just again, if everybody decides to show up at town hall, you can't tell them, go home and get on your computer.
I'm sorry. Roger, are you still on?
Yeah, I'm here Robin.
Alright, how are you, how are you guys doing this for your upcoming meeting on Thursday?
We're gonna be open, but still zooming.
Backing Robin.
We're gonna be open, but still zooming.
So you're gonna do them both?
Yeah, you know, for this meeting, why don't you just, why doesn't have Barbara just put in it that if you plan to attend and not vaccinated, you need to have a mask or you need to, and or you need to bring proof of vaccination.
But that is what she's saying that, but she likes to know who is going to monitor that.
It's on the honor system according to everything that I've read.
We're allowed, we are allowed to ask.
Yeah.
And it's, that's specified by the state that we can ask.
I mean, when they, when they come into the room. When they come into the room, you just ask them, sir, sir ma'am, do you, are you vaccinated? If they say yes or no, if you say yes, can you prove it? We need to see something. Since it was posted in the notice that they have to bring it. So when they come upstairs, say, we need to see your vaccination, proof of vaccination, or are you gonna have to wear a mask? Simple as that.
And sit over in this section where you're six feet apart.
Exactly.
From other members of the public. The, I guess the question is, can we fit people? If, if we have a number of people who want to be present, but don't have vaccinations, the room is small.
Staking his head.
You can maybe, Mary Lou, you can fit even, even if the whole.
I know, I know.
On the dais, you can fit about six people in that room in addition to the board being up on the dais. If you're gonna stay six feet apart in all directions.
You can, you can get more than that, but you're gonna have to make room for people that are vaccinated and possibly maybe just have three or four chairs for non-vaccinated. And once those fill, that's it. That's the capacity of the room.
But the problem is you can't turn people away.
Yeah, it's a public meeting.
It's a public meeting, but we're saying if you're not vaccinated.
Right, no, we can't, we cannot say if you're not, if we open up, we can't say if you're not vaccinated, you can't be here because we don't have room for you.
No, you could say you need to, if you're not vaccinated, you need to wear a mask. If we let those people in, once you hit capacity, once you hit capacity, I'm sorry, we have no more room. We, we are, we are.
I don't think we can do that, Roger.
So I think a lot of this, a lot of this came out just today and I'm sure the lawyers are gonna be figuring this out within the next day. These are all like, I think these are all very legit and, you know, questions, and I think they're very important questions. But I think, um, what we can do, um, if, if Jonathan's not back, if we have answer, I mean, I can always, I'm gonna contact a number of land use attorneys that I know tomorrow and like.
I'm the land use attorney for the court.
Sorry, yes.
That's why I've been following these things so closely and why I, I know what the guidance is today.
I have it all figured out. We'll put the board on the fire escape. Empty the parking lot and everybody stand in the parking lot. I've got a microphone and a, a radio microphone and a speaker. We're done.
Just have a meeting at the pavilion.
Can we have the meeting at another place? Can we have it at Village Hall, which has a much bigger meeting room? If they're even available and open on that day.
It could have it.
Or, or the Masonic Lodge. I mean, we've done meetings at other places when we were having the meetings for Walmart, which were.
What about the school auditorium?
I don't know, because the school right now, I don't know what kind of events of their own they're doing, let alone letting us in. Doesn't mean we can't chat.
We have various public meetings, Mary Lou, at the fire departments too, and it's gonna be, uh, a, a meeting that we expect a lot of people to attend.
Right.
Something, something else, could the board meet in person with the applicants and the public attend by Zoom?
Yes.
That might clear things up because we probably, you know, again, with the idea that, uh, that, you know, proof of vaccination. And if not, you know, you'll have to wait outside or whatever, you know, if the applicants are not, uh, vaccinated, they'd have to wait outside or social distance until their time came. I mean, that would.
That's a good solution.
That, that would resolve the issues for the short term until some of these other issues can be, uh, you know, worked out.
That's a good idea, Don, because then we can open those maps and it's much easier for us and for the applicant.
And have back and forth with the applicant and can see body language and all that sort of thing.
Yep.
Right.
I think that's a, a good, uh, a good idea, you know, unless the governor says no more virtual meetings, in which case we'll, we'll be in person and.
That's it.
I'll call his office and say, tell me how that, how to do this.
Paul, is that something that you can do through the TV cameras that are in the room rather than?
Well, actually I was just gonna, uh, mention that the town purchased, uh, a few months ago, a smart board, which is a seventy-two inch smart board that's got, uh, video and audio capability. I know the, the town court has used it quite a bit since we purchased it. Uh, if you have that, I mean, even your charts and diagrams are gonna show up nice and big, uh, if you want to using that smart board. So that is a way to, uh, you know, allow the board to, you know, kinda see the body language and everything and see the charts and diagrams from somebody who's, uh, attending the, the meeting virtually. We actually have a presentation being done for the board this Thursday on the, uh, the, the water study that's been done. And the gentleman who's doing the presentation is gonna be doing it remotely via Zoom. And we're gonna use the, the smart board so we can all, you know, see the presentation that's being done. It's a matter of, um, you know, teaching somebody how to use it. Uh, we're in the process of doing that. A lot of the, you know, as I said, the court's been using it. Um, it's not hard to learn how to use it. Michelle Manolffy's been running that on her own ever since I taught her how to use it. And they've been using it at almost every, uh, court appearance for the past, oh, I don't know, three or four weeks now.
Very good.
Very good.
So, you know, we, we learned to do this, we'll learn to get to the next step.
We'll try to have some arrangements made so that we can post it on our website and have just applicants show interested parties by Zoom. We'll talk about it and try to get it firm down between Paul and.
I think that's a great idea. Good idea, Don.
And on the minutes, anybody have any errors or omissions or directions to the minutes of last meeting? I was not present, so I can't vote. All in favor?
Aye.
You have to motion to accept.
Well, it's getting late, seven o'clock.
Hey, John, I'll make the motion that we accept the minutes.
I'll second it. Don Odom and Frank.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anything else to bring before the board before we close?
I'm just, Robin, have Barbara note that John abstained.
Yes, thank you.
Right under there.
Okay, I'll accept the motion to close.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I'll second.
Favor. Good night, everyone.
Good night.